Tuesday, November 13th, 2012 to order. May we stand for the course of the week?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we take a roll?
Commissioner Bushy?
Here.
Commissioner Crisio?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Here.
Mayor Costelli?
Here. We're all here. Next item is consideration of the following minutes. Public hearing and special city commission meeting held Monday, September 24th, 2012, and regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, October 9th, 2012. Amy, I think with respect to the first set of minutes, reflects Commissioner Rubino. When he was present, I believe he was absent at that meeting, so that correction would be in order. Is there a motion to approve the minutes and including that one correction, if there is no other items?
Mr. Mayor, I move the minutes for the public hearing and the special city commission meeting held Monday, September 24th, 2012, and the minutes for the regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, October 9th, 2012, be approved as recommended.
With the correction of--
With the correction of--
Mr. Rubino being absent. Is there support?
Support.
Questions, comments? Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of the proposed amendments to the Articles of Incorporation for the Southeast Oakland County Resource Recycling Authority, known as SACRA. Sherri.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce the attorney that's here this evening for both SACRA and SACRA-- SACWA and SACRA, and he can explain and answer any questions that you may have on the Articles of Incorporation, which I'm sure all of you have read. There is a process involved when the articles are amended, and first they must be adopted unanimously by the board members, the community board members of SACRA, and then they must be presented to each governing body and approved as well. For a summary of the amendments, I would ask Mr. Davis to address those.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you. This is the largest crowd I've had for the Articles of Incorporation.
We take our credit seriously.
Appreciate it.
Could you introduce yourself formally for the record?
Because you're such a good guy.
My name is Robert Davis. I'm the attorney for SACRA. I am for SACWA. The Articles of Incorporation for SACRA were last amended in 1976. The stylistic and the amendments that we've made are purely required by law and/or just stylistic and changing some of the headings. Nothing has changed with respect to the voting structure. Nothing has changed with respect to the mission. Nothing has changed in the enabling law. Nothing has changed with respect to the calculation of your tonnages and your voting power. The main changes were, we finally changed the name of the organization to be the right name. It feels good now. If we have litigation, to have the right name in court, your lawyer would appreciate that. We updated the member communities to reflect who is now a current member. We made the statutory required changes. We adopted Robert's Rules of Order formally, which we've been following for years. And I put headings in so that when you're reading these things, you can go to the right section when you're looking for the right information. Other than that, the amendments do not change any of the substantive aspects of this organization. That's a summary of what was changed in the articles. If you have any other questions about those or any aspect of what SACRA is doing right now, I'd be happy to answer those questions as well.
And as part of the catch-up in these amendments, nothing that's recent news, but two communities dropped out. Is that correct?
Royal Oak Township.
Royal Oak Township. I'll make sure I get that right. I did sell a couple bins in the back here.
You know, if you're not careful, you're gonna be Ted's assistant.
Just, you know, one update that I want to tell you that we're pretty excited about is, and maybe the community might be, is that we're really working hard now to get you into single-stream recycling with bins. We're looking at 65- to 95-gallon bins. We're looking at single-stream recycling in the next couple of years for your community and all the other communities, which I think will be a fantastic benefit for you both, functionally with your recycling and productive-wise for you financially. So, we're working hard on that, opening a facility and getting single-stream in place.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the proposed amendment? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the proposed amendments to the Articles of Incorporation for the Southeast Oakland County Resource Recycling Authority, SACRA, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bob, I would ask that perhaps if you stay for the next item and then, you know, a little bit, you can witness what Helane's been subjected to all these long years in the spirit of recycling.
I'm gonna go find one of your logo rec-- But I appreciate the invitation.
Next item is the consideration of the resolution and recognition of County Commissioner Helane Zach, our former county commissioner, aged as of January, but still a county commissioner for another jurisdiction. Sherri, can you introduce the item?
Yes. I am very proud to offer this evening a resolution recognizing the years of service that Commissioner Zach has offered to the city and to me and to all of you, I'm sure. And I would ask that the city clerk read the resolution into the record and that it be presented to Commissioner Zach by you. I know we have been talking about this for months, and it's so funny, every time you mention it, Commissioner Zach always says, "Not yet, not yet." But I think it's most appropriate this month to take care of this part of it.
Amy.
Resolution by the City Commission of the City of Pleasant Ridge, recognizing the long service of Oakland County Commissioner Helane Zach. Whereas Helane Zach is a fifth-term Oakland County Commissioner for the 22nd District, which includes Huntington Woods, Oak Park, Pleasant Ridge, Royal Oak Township, and Southfield. She currently serves on the Finance and Human Resource Committees. Helane is the Oakland County appointee to the Area Agency on Aging 1B Board, and whereas Helane decided to run for Oakland County Commissioner in November 2002 to advocate for individuals, families, and communities. With her expertise in health and human service issues, she has spearheaded special projects such as jail diversion of the mentally ill, public safety and jail overcrowding, and preparing for the aging baby boomer population. She is particularly interested in having thriving and successful commercial and residential communities. And whereas for more than 30 years, Helane has been an employee assistance professional in addition to her role as Oakland County Commissioner, she works part-time as the manager of Employee Assistance Program at Belmont Health System. Helane is a frequent trainer and presenter on topics such as mental health, stress management, sexual harassment, work-life balance, and trauma intervention. And whereas Helane's years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interest of the community as she has worked constantly for the betterment of its economic, cultural, and aesthetic development, she has proven to be of great assistance to the city during these many years. Whereas Helane has earned the respect and affection of those with whom she has come into contact and the admiration of other civic leaders who are proud to call her friend. Now therefore, be it resolved by virtue of the authority vested in Ralph A. Costelli, Mayor, on behalf of the entire City Commission, he does hereby tender to Commissioner Helane Zach the certificate of recognition, extending to her deep appreciation for her distinguished service, distinguished dedicated service to the City of Pleasant Ridge, and further extending best wishes for continued success in all her future endeavors.
Is there such a motion?
Your Honor, I move the resolution in recognition of County Commissioner Helane Zach be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Helane, before calling for a vote-- Real pleasure, sincerely, to work with you all these years. You've been a great representative of our city and the other cities. We have your recommendation that our new representative will be just as good, but we're not gonna give up your phone number. May I call for a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. And that was from Sherri and Scott Pique-Taltez. Do you believe that?
Thank you. Do I get to speak?
Absolutely.
With your name and address.
Helane Zach, still County Commissioner until December 31st for Pleasant Ridge. I hate saying goodbye to your community. You've been absolutely wonderful. I feel like an honorary resident. You've welcomed me into your homes, your community. I thoroughly enjoyed getting to know all of you, and I'm very sad to lose you. And frankly, I tried to fight to keep you. It just made no sense how the whole redistricting process and not to put Pleasant Ridge into the Woodward corridor as far as Commissioner. It was illogical, especially when we look at the Woodward Five, whatever. But I'm still close by. I will always be here. You know how to find me. I know you're gonna be in good hands with Gary McGilroy. We work very closely as a team, you know, cooperatively with one another. So I know that you're in good hands. But I want to thank everybody for this wonderful proclamation and everything that you've given to me. So, thank you.
Now, Helane, just remember, this is County Commissioner Meredith of Pleasant Ridge. You'll still be at our place at 9:00 on Memorial Day and make the Ferndale Parade by 10:00. Next item, why don't we jump around one little bit? Ted, do you have a final recycling appearance with Helane?
Yes, I have-- I have a short report. Well, let's see that we're going to acknowledge Miracle Recycle State during your city commission, so that's really great. I want to remind everybody that there's free tours over there, and my plan is to get my grandchildren out there during the free tours. And during the month of November, there is Bin Blitz, where anybody could get their bin, and my lovely assistant here-- For the last time. Thank you very much. You'll get, not a blue one, but a green and yellow one for $6. And you say, "Oh, I can't carry that home and everything else like that." It could be delivered to you at your door by the City of Pleasant Ridge. $6, and that's it. Any other question? Oh, any other questions regarding recycling?
Thank you.
Okay. I have-- this is not recycling, but it's pretty close. As you know, I've been here for 15 years plus, and we decided to retire. So I'm testing out right now taping just with one camera to see how it turns out, because the other equipment was a lot of work and started around 3:00 usually, and we're gonna see how it goes just with one camera, so it'll be easier transition. I didn't know I was gonna say this tonight. I thought I was gonna say this next month. But I really have to thank everybody over here, past and current commissioners. I had a blast. I had so much fun doing the video work, and I got paid for it. You know, it's something I love. When I was a little kid, I used to watch Soupy Sales. Some of you might remember. With the white finning and black tooth-- And I was a little kid at that time, and I thought, "Oh, I wish I could be a camera person," but I thought, "Oh, that's over my head. I can't do that." But after retiring from the state of Michigan, I was a social worker, I got called. I didn't know why, and then they said that I would be doing this. I goes, "Oh," I looked in that closet there. It hasn't changed very much, but I could understand a little bit of this beginning, and I was able to broadcast, and I am just delighted that I got this opportunity. I'd like to say, "Thank you very much." Sherri over there with Jim Maroche. Was there something else?
He was the manager when you were hired.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I have to thank everybody again. Thank you, and thanks again, Helane. Thank you.
Next item is the considering of the receiving and filing the audit of the city's financial statements for fiscal year ended June 30, 2012. Sherri.
Mayor and city commissioners, as we discussed in the workshop held just prior to the meeting, the city's auditor, Ellen Stevens, is here this evening, as well as our financial consultant, Molly Goiki, if anyone has any questions. But I have asked Mr. Stevens to make a brief presentation on the financial statement for the year ending 2012.
All right, thank you. I'd like to start out, we did go over this in great detail at the workshop, but I'd like to remind everyone that the purpose of an audit is to provide an opinion as to whether the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, or GAAP. The purpose of an audit is not to detect fraud or give an opinion on your internal controls. Sound internal control is management's responsibility. Our opinion on your financial statements is included in the independent auditors' report and was an unqualified or a clean opinion. Unqualified is good. Without exception, the financial statements were fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That's the best opinion you can receive for a set of financial statements, and that's really what you're looking for as a council-- commission, excuse me. I did prepare a couple of charts and graphs that we discussed, and they're just, again, to highlight. I have a five-year bar graph on the general fund revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. And as you can see from the graph, the city has maintained a healthy fund balance over the course of the five-year period. For June 30, 2012, your total revenues were $2,362,902. There was approximately, it's actually less than 1% decrease in revenues for 2011. Expenditures were $2,241,602, which was about a 4% decrease in those of 2011. You ended the year with a fund balance, general fund fund balance, of $746,920. Of that, the unassigned portion of fund balance represented approximately 30% of your annual expenditures. So the city is in great shape financially, the general fund. You added fund balances in each of the past two years. You're in sound financial condition as of June 30, 2012, and that's really a credit to the administration. The economic times that you've seen over the past five years, and we've been able to maintain a healthy fund balance, is really fantastic.
Erin, as we discussed in the workshop, if you look at the comparison of 2008 before the economic meltdown and the end of the 2012 fiscal year, our fund balance, while we ate into it for some of those down years, is now back approximately where it started from.
Pretty close, yep. We're about the 2008 level. We also have a couple pie charts that detail the composition of your general fund revenues and expenditures. The composition has remained fairly consistent from 11 to 12. The largest source of revenue is, of course, property taxes of 61%. That is followed by charges for services at 19% of your total revenues. On the expenditure side, public safety at 45%, general government at 23%, those are just pieces of pie there on the expenditure side, and then very close to the composition from 2011. Also, just to highlight, the segregated capital asset fund, the entire fund balance has been committed by the city commission, and that fund balance as of June 30, 2012 was $3,288,327, so the corpus does remain intact. The audit went very well. I'd like to thank the city staff for their courtesy cooperation and assistance, as well as Molly Goiki and Graham Moran. They went very smoothly.
Questions, Erin? Is there a motion to receive and file the financial statements?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the audit of the city financial statement for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2012, be received and filed as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
And Sherri, Amy, Scott, Molly, great job again.
Yes, very much.
Next item is consideration of the monthly disbursement report. Amy.
Accounts payable and payables, accounts payable and payroll for the month of October was provided to all of you prior to the meeting. Payroll for the month was $77,949.21. Accounts payable was $757,854.55, of which $249,198.62 was in tax liabilities.
Is there a motion as to the monthly disbursement report?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could, can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
Sherri, or Scott, I see this come up every month, and I meant to ask, been meaning to ask.
What every month?
The, it's accounts payable for the checks, it's actually check 16907. Can you kind of explain what goes into that? That's the office supplies, recreation, special events.
It's the American Express bill.
Every month, right, there is a disbursement to American Express, and it covers everything from sometimes a purchase of a computer to office supplies for the general office, recreation department. It just runs the gamut.
That one was a little larger, because it had a mayor dinner, which were reimbursed for by three or four cities. So there was a large disbursement on that.
Yeah, normally they're not that large.
No, not at all. That one does stick out, because I guess if there was a disbursement--
Probably half of it was.
Yeah, there's a large amount for the mayor dinner, which were reimbursed by Huntington Woods, Ferndale, and Oak Park for a third.
Okay.
There's that.
One other item, on the, it's check 16934, and it's the city sprinklers. It's, what goes, I mean, is that paying for insulation? Is that paying for the water that the sprinklers use? What goes into that?
It's the cost of water.
Okay. So that's the cost of water that we use for irrigation?
For those sprinklers, they're included in this line item. We paid $37,500 for water.
And that season, like, they're off now, right?
They're off now.
And when do they, when do we turn them back on?
They go back on typically April. Beginning of April, or, I'm sorry, end of April, beginning of May, and then they'll run. From this year, they ran till, I want to say, middle of September, when we started to get cool. We knocked them down in the middle of August, when it started, when the heat wave went away too, but it was, it was a hot summer, so as everybody knows.
Is this one quarter, or is this?
It's the season.
That's the--
Those are seasons.
But that is not all the sprinklers either.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't include the ones at the community center. It's all the parks.
It's all out here.
Okay, and are those listed in other, will they be in other disper--
The ones at the community center will be paid for on the community center water bills.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that the October disbursement report be approved as listed.
I second that.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of governmental reports. Helane!
I can't leave without giving my final report, but I do want to tell you about a couple of things. First of all, I just want to demonstrate, it's the end of the season, and we have pages of finance. We're accepting a lot of money for grants, which is always a good thing. You know, urine, drug court grants, things like that. One of the things that Oakland County that we've approved is a veterans internship, and it's for a couple of them. The details haven't evolved yet, but we did approve it, and this is the county's statement to try and welcome veterans, give them some additional job skills to prepare them for jobs. And details will emerge on the Oakland County website in a month or two, I hope. We also did approve to include autism coverage on our four employees and their family members. We don't have the obligation to do it as a public entity that's self-insured, but we thought it was the right thing to do based on the legislation that was passed in the state of Michigan. So we are going to be offering autism coverage, again, to set a model and standard. And that's about it. So, thank you again for everything, and questions for me?
We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I expect to see you in Memorial.
Only George serves me breakfast.
Next item is consideration of any other governmental reports. Anybody else here from a governmental unit?
Amy Butters is here.
There she is.
I'm in limbo. I don't know. This is where I belong now, or--
Yes.
Come on in, limbo. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm Amy Butters, and I'm here on behalf of the newly-elected school board members from the Bold Team, myself, Jim O'Donnell, Raylon Leaks-May, and Kevin Deegan Kraus, and I'm just here to offer our appreciation to the residents of Pleasant Ridge for supporting us during the election, and we are really looking forward to starting our term. We take the, we take our offices in January, so that's when the real work begins, as everybody keeps reminding me. And I just want to, Anne was wondering if I could just give a little bit of report about what's going on in the school district, just a couple of things I wanted to point out. A lot of you maybe have heard about the marching band, the Ferndale High School marching band that went to state a couple of Saturdays ago, and they got second place. They, I heard that they got their highest score ever, and so they did really well, and we're all really proud of them. And if you would still like an opportunity to go see them, they're gonna be in the Holiday Magic Parade, which is this coming Sunday in Royal Oak at 2:00 p.m. So that would be a great opportunity for everyone to come out and see the band. Also--
Is that on Main Street?
Yeah, I think it's, is it Main Street or is it Washington?
Washington.
Washington. Also, this weekend, in the Fine Arts Department, the kids are putting on Bus Stop, which is a play by William Inge, and they made a movie. Marilyn Monroe was in the movie, so I think it'll be interesting to see how the kids, how the kids interpret that play. That's this weekend, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:30, and Sunday at 3:00 at the high school auditorium. And then lastly, I just wanted to make sure that people are aware that it's not too early to start thinking about enrollment in Ferndale schools if you have an incoming hithegartner or, you know, any incoming elementary-age student. They are doing tours, building tours, and they, it is a good time now to start, you know, the whole paperwork process, and so I encourage you to check out ferndaleschools.org. There's a big button there that has instructions for new families. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other governmental reports? Please, I have reports. Commissioner Crisio?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to review our recreation meeting that was held on the 7th of this month, we finally had an opportunity to welcome our newest member, Christine Mathias. She had been, her appearance had been delayed because she was giving birth, but she showed up and she was ready to go, and we look forward to her participating in the group. The big hitter for us this week is the Thanksgiving Market. It's actually this Friday, actually from, this Friday from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And on Friday, there'll be a coffee tea tasting with desserts, and the admission is $5 for that event. On Saturday, there'll be a children's workshop. There'll be lunch for purchase. There'll be a local goods market, and admission is $3. Please bring a donation of canned dry goods to help those in need during the winter season. is $3. Please bring a donation of canned dry goods, uh, to help those in need during the winter, uh, season as we'll be collecting those at the community center as well. Um, I really want to, uh, highlight, uh, the good work that Sue Turpak did to organize and put this together. She's been working hard for months to organize this. Um, she's got 24 artists, uh, ready to, uh, ready to go and, um, we look forward to, uh, a fun weekend at the community center. And our community enrichment subcommittee is working on, um, organizing the appraisal fair. We have a tentative, we have tentative dates either April 6th or April 20th. Um, we're in the process right now of, uh, organizing that event. Um, the community garden wrapped up recently. Um, we all agreed that it was a great year and sharing table seemed to be an enormous success. I don't know if you, any of you got any, got in on the sharing table, but, uh, there's a lot of good stuff to be had down there. Um, our health and wellness subcommittee is working on a health and wellness fair for January 12th. It's a Saturday and it'll be from 9:00 to 4:00 P.M. And what we have planned for that is, um, three rooms in the community center highlighting, uh, different, um, exercise and fitness opportunities. We'll have, uh, trainers who, uh, are from Pleasant Ridge and specialize in, in all sorts of, uh, health and wellness classes. So that'll be a whole day of events there. Um, it's kind of a kickoff to what is generally a, uh, resolution time for exercise. And, um, our last subcommittee, uh, the community build, um, is in the process of kicking off their fundraising and they've actually, um, uh, come up with a name for their, uh, subcommittee group. It kind of highlights their, uh, their direction. It's called the Playmakers. And the Pleasant Ridge, just a little background on it, the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission has created a new group dedicated to maximizing the opportunities for our children to play. The Playmakers believe that play is an essential part of any childhood. And in addition to being fun and a great source of exercise, also develops creative and innovative young minds. Um, the first project that the Playmakers are, uh, looking at, uh, doing, um, involves installing, uh, new park equipment at, uh, Gainesboro Park. Gainesboro Park is integral for many families in the city, has been reliable fun for hundreds of youngsters, but it leaves one segment of our kids on the sidelines. And Scott has really helped us with this. Uh, you know, uh, the playground equipment that is down there was developed for children age five to 12. So that, that play structure can be too challenging for toddlers who are just learning to get around. So the Playmakers wanted to give the tots a little area of their own where they could climb and explore. Uh, they have found two playground pieces that they feel will do just the trick. One is a moon rock climber and the other is a suspended cozy cocoon thingamajig. I don't know if you guys can see him, but, um. There's the moon rock climber and there's the, uh, cozy cocoon. So, um, the plan is to have this exciting new equip, equipment installed in the spring of 2013, but to do that, we need the help of the citizens of Pleasant Ridge. Um, and part of why I highlight this tonight is the Playmakers have kicked off their fundraising and as part of their fundraising, they're, um, selling these window clings. Uh, if they're for $4, all proceeds go to this project. And I believe they're available at the recreation center for $4. So, um, please pick up one of those and support the Playmakers. But most importantly, don't forget the Thanksgiving artist market this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bushy?
Planning Commission, the, uh, city manager informed the planning commission last month that May's Restaurants had completed their application for the liquor license. There will be no site plan review and so they'll go rate direct for a public hearing, which Sheri will be scheduling here hopefully in the near future. There's been some discussions regarding the overpass at Main Street, uh, Woodward Avenue and 696 intersection. There's a great desire to do something over there. Um, so they're discussing it. Sheri will be meeting with them, uh, the first part of next year and see if we can meet with the city commission and tentatively get something going over in that area. And also the planning commission will be working on their master plan, uh, early next year. As far as the DDA goes, uh, they are diligently working on the alley program, um, for next year's budget. They want to reconstruct all the alleys and it's a very high priority for the DDA. They're also working on the, uh, as everybody probably noticed, they have the new light up at Woodward, Sylvan, and Oakland Park intersections. Some of other improvements are coming up will be marking on the streets and zebra marking for pedestrian walks, which would be also very nice. Um, and also the city manager plans to schedule a joint workshop with the city, uh, city commission, planning commission, DDA to review, uh, future, future projects.
Thank you. Before passing Commissioner Rubino at the PR club party on Friday night, I was drafted as the unofficial liaison with respect to two garden club matters. I offered them to Edie and she offered them back to me. Garden Club is having a festive evening on December 5th at 6:30 at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center. The fee is $25. The project is creating a fresh boxwood centerpiece and the real project is eating heavy appetizers, enjoying wine punch and desserts. Uh, is there a flyer going around available for details? Edie somewhere?
Yes, it's one at Four Ridge by the arrangement that will be created by each member.
Okay, there's a, yeah, Four Ridge by the arrangement that will be created.
In City Hall.
And at City Hall. And then secondly, there is a fundraiser for the benefit of the garden club. Limited number of tickets will be sold, 100, tickets will be sold at $100 per ticket. It's a gala party hosted by Lee Hart and Charles Dunlop of 15 Oxford, one of the more fabulous houses in the town. Robert Campbell is in charge of, uh, selling tickets and he can be reached at 248-568-7830. And with that, I retire from the garden club and pass it to Commissioner Rubino. December 8th is the day of the fundraiser. Sorry, thank you.
Sure. Historical Commission, uh, there will be no speaker series in January. However, the commission has worked, has some ideas for the spring that I can't really tell you about, but it seems pretty interesting and I think you're gonna be pretty happy when it comes to fruition. And, um, hopefully in January or February, we'll be able to tell you what that is. Also, the historical commission has ordered plaques from Foabik that are going to be, uh, distributed to the homes that are over 100 years. Uh, they'll be called, uh, this is a sample they gave us. However, it's gonna say Centennial Homes and of course it'll be, City of Pleasant Ridge will be all capital and the city emblem will be in the middle. This, hopefully, it'll take, what, 10 to 12 weeks for us to get them. Uh, and then the notification for the homes. And I believe there's 12 homes right now that are Elchebo and by the end of, I believe the middle of 2013, it'd be seven more, close to 19 homes. We've ordered 20 of, of the, of the plaques to be made. They're really beautiful. They'll be in blue and green. Uh, the, the cost, the majority of the cost is gonna be borne by the historical commission. I believe the cost of just doing the template is $1,400. And then the towels are $50 apiece for them to purchase. They'll be having a contribution back from the owners if they want them. Right now it's at $35, however, that may change. Also, on December 3rd, the commission invited Santa, who's gonna be at the tree lighting, uh, and asked him if you'd stay over and possibly sit down with some of the residents' childrens and take pictures. Uh, they've asked Santa to also bring one of his reindeers, which he's going to do. So if you're interested and you're going to attend the tree lighting on December 3rd, there'll be a professional photographer there that's being picked up by the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission and they'll take the pictures and give them to you right then and there. And the children can have fun with Santa. Uh, so I hope you all are there and I hope the weather's right and I hope it's not raining. So.
Yeah.
If anything, pray for snow. Don't pray for rain. Okay? That's all we have going on right now and I think it's gonna be exciting. Thank you.
Commissioner Perry?
Thank you, Amy Butters, for giving the school update. Um, as far as transit goes, uh, Sheri and Scott and I had a great meeting with the, um, the consultants, talking about land use. And so it, you know, it helped us hear, um, all of the, it helped, so Sheri and Scott could really hear all of the status as to where, um, this project is going with alternatives analysis up Woodward. And, you know, and they were able to hear what our concerns and thoughts are as far as land use. Also, the Woodward Transit Alternatives Analysis website is up and it is a great overview of the study. And I will post it a couple of places. I'll get, um, I'll get it to Ted and to Scott, but the website address is woodwardanalysis.com. And then also the, oh, there's going to be a public involvement here, uh, public involvement for the Transit Alternative Analysis too, which will be upcoming in early December. And I'll keep you updated to the dates because, you know, hopefully this could actually happen someday. So it could be exciting. Somebody was also, wanted to make sure that I mentioned that Firm Care is having a bowl-a-thon on December 2nd, which all of the funds will go to benefit the clinic, which assists people who need low care, low cost or no cost healthcare services. So December 2nd in Ferndale and I'll let you know where later. I think it's at 1:00 P.M. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before going to number 11 as, uh, again unofficial liaison, Amy, Scott, Sheri, we're 2,500 of your best friends. Uh, two Tuesdays ago, or last Tuesday, you guys conducted a great election.
Yeah.
Uh, we did not have any of the line issues that other cities had, certainly not that Florida had. With the revamping of, of the aisles for the lines. Uh, nobody was outside except poor guy for CNN and all the school board candidates. Uh, but I think you did a great job and you're owed a great thank you. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Amy, there was a new, and to all the election workers too.
Oh, yeah.
Who, uh, come for the food. Uh, Amy, do you report on, you know, the training of the, uh, assistant clerk, for lack of a better term on elections? Bridget?
Well, Bridget Brown, who, um, all of you may know from the community center. She was training on elections and she had a very exciting day to train on. Um, it was a long day, but she did a great job and she was eager to learn and picked up things relatively quickly. And I also have to thank the inspectors. They did a great job. I had several new inspectors working this election and it's a, it's a tough election to learn on, but they, they did, they did really good work.
Thank you. You know, with the TV facing that way, watching Amy talk us live like, like listening to an HD show watching a non-HD show. Public discussion items not on the agenda is the next item.
Hi, Mark Johnson, 21 Maywood Avenue for the last 20 years and 23 810 Woodward for 10 of those. I'm here because I'm concerned about, um, some conversations and dialogues that are taking place in relationship to our commercial properties in Pleasant Ridge. I think it's a timely issue that's being brought up as we're, um, having public meetings discussing liquor licenses, the impact of our commercial businesses on, um, on the residential, um, activities in the community, as well as some comments that have been made and I think misinterpreted about east versus west. And I'd really like to, uh, to ask the mayor and the city commissioners to look into, um, sort of helping educate everybody to the issues. We do have a very unique DDA or downtown area here in Pleasant Ridge where, um, downtowns are typically public and private, um, by nature, or a public-private partnership by nature, whereas it's a privately owned piece of land, but it operates within the confines of the public good. There's been a lot of, uh, sort of confusion, I believe, about our commercial real estate, specifically on the east side, specifically related to the last years while we talk about, um, liquor licenses. We're turning over our city in some ways to private development because that's the way our land use has been established on the east side of Woodward. The west side of Woodward, it's a very different scenario. The bulk of that land is privately, um, held, privately managed. It fits very neatly into the vision of the city. But the east side properties don't. Having been a property owner on the, in the commercial district for 10 years, um, I'm not sure that there is a nice balance between commercial needs and the residential needs. And I think that was expressed during the, um, hearing that we had on the liquor license. And I see that we're gonna be addressing it again. Um, it's unfortunate that economic development right now is hinging on, um, the liquor license because we need businesses in Pleasant Ridge on the east side. We have a lot of underused or not used facilities. There are, I'd say 60% of the property on the east side for the last eight years has either been for sale, in foreclosure, or underused in terms of the building area relative to the land use that we can attract. I implore you to push the DDA beyond its usual thinking and begin to look at how to advise the community about certain issues that the community is confused about. Who owns the alleyways? What are they used for? Who benefits from those alleyways? Because it's not just the residents. It's the commercial businesses that depend on them. It's the commercial businesses that pay for them. The city owns them, but they should be amenities that work for both of the residences and the commercial properties. And I think we need to do a, a more due diligence with, uh, the DDA in clearing the air, if you will, with the developing that we're trying to promote here. We brought someone in who has great intentions, who's put a lot of money into the building, Fields Art Supply Building, but as a community, we beat him up pretty badly. And we beat him up for the right reasons in the sense that the residents have realistic concerns about the land use that's being requested. But I think we've done a disservice to our community and we've done a disservice specifically to the commercial, um, owners who might be looking at our community because we're confused. We don't know what we want those commercial spaces to be. And I think the DDA needs to answer that question for this community. And I hope that we can, um, call on them to do a better job of participating in the dialogue, not just about the liquor licenses, but how do we fill up space like Field Art Supply? How do we address our parking concerns when we do get prosperous businesses in those spaces? Gone are the day when we can have small service providers, doctors, lawyers, architects, fill those spaces and be gentle neighbors from nine to five. We need variety. We need diversity. And ultimately, we need a little more density along Woodward. I think, um, the Maywood development shows that we can have density with greater residential act, um, building on Woodward. Let's see if we can incorporate that into our land use planning. The planning commission could take a much stronger role in writing form-based codes to make that possible and also to make sure that it happens when somebody comes knocking at the door for Pleasant Ridge Commercial Real Estate and wants to start investing in our community. We can guide them rather than push them away or beat them up, um, as happened at the last liquor license meeting. I worry that if the only economic development that we're promoting is because of these liquor licenses, we've missed the boat. There's a lot happening on Woodward, whether it's transit related, complete streets related, which is being promoted by the federal government, by the state government. We don't have a complete street on Woodward Avenue. We have empty storefronts. The only people who walk on Woodward Avenue are walking because they're making, turning a corner or taking their dog for, uh, for the loop that they need to get to the next street. It's not because we have viable businesses along that area, save Cork and Maze, which are new pieces that we are struggling with how to incorporate. We don't have a complete street. So I implore you all to, uh, to push back on the DDA and the planning commission to, uh, to start helping the private sector and the community at large work more sympathetically.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other items not on the agenda? Sheri, can you give a report as long as it was mentioned in, uh, in Mark's, uh, addressing us on the status of the Pearlman application?
Oh, sure.
I'm not sure if that's been publicly announced.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Um, Mr. Pearlman met with the planning consultant and me after the public hearing, sometime after the public hearing.
It was a couple of weeks.
Yeah, it was a, a good amount of time. And after careful deliberation, he has decided to move the restaurant to another community. Um, so he will not be as involved, obviously, with this building, but it is his intention, obviously, to obviously, to get all the space occupied. He is still interested in working on some additional parking ideas for the area around that building and that's something the DDA will be looking at.
And I understand the law offices across the street finally sold. I, the other night, I saw what may look like an open house party taking place. And I think there's another law firm moving in.
Oh, I wasn't sure what was going in there, but yes, we had, we had heard that it is sold.
Next item is the consent agenda. Sherri.
Mayor and City Commission, you see in your packet this evening, there are four items on the consent agenda for your consideration. The first is a proclamation recognizing Veterans Day on Saturday, November 11th. The next is a resolution recognizing America Recycles Day on Thursday, November 15th. The next is a resolution in support of the Woodward Grand Fondo cycling event, which is scheduled to be held on June 30th, 2013. I have some additional details, although it's on the consent agenda, I'd be happy to provide those. And finally, a request by the Fund for Public Interest to solicit door-to-door from November 14th through December 31st. My recommendation is that all of these items be approved.
Can you explain Grand Fondo?
I can.
Here, the other commissioner, Sherri, can assist me, I'm sure, if you'll pass that down.
Some of you will recall, I attended a meeting of the Woodward Corridor Communities more than a year ago, when the idea was tossed out there to hold a Grand Fondo, or, which means a big race in Italian, on Woodward Avenue. And this would be the 27-mile Woodward Avenue, not just starting at eight miles. So, it's the entire corridor, both ways. There was some hesitation on the communities' part, both because of what this might cost, given what, we know what the dream cruise costs the communities, and also the, the police representatives expressed some sincere and serious concerns about safety. What was initially being planned were two events. One was kind of a, anyone with a bike, so from toddlers to seniors, come out, ride the corridor, maybe in a dedicated lane, kind of thing. And then the other event was for true cyclists, and there would probably be some kind of a race involved with that. I hadn't heard anything about it after a while, and didn't put much stock in it because I knew a couple of the chiefs of the major communities on the strip were not endorsing it. Apparently, this has gone a little bit further. The idea is that this would be a great fundraiser, it would, you know, be paid for with sponsorship dollars, and apparently, the Woodward Avenue Action Association plans to go ahead with this. So, what I'm asking you to do this evening is simply support the resolution that they adopted, and that is to, to endorse the idea of a Grand Fondo on Woodward on that date. Obviously, this is all going to be contingent on whether or not the details of such a large event and on a grand scale will be able to be done. And it was postponed for a year in order to allow time for more planning.
Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move the consent agenda to be approved as recommended.
There's support.
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Robino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziek?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of the report on the Pemberton Drive West sidewalk. Sherri.
Well, at Rash, we get to deal with the sidewalk issue in public. So, um, let me get to my item. And first, let me mention that I, in your packet, I included the comments that had been sent to me on both pro and con for the sidewalk issue. And then yesterday, I received a number, a good number more of email responses, and today, even more, up until the last time I checked, with the six o'clock. So, although there are probably three or four separate packets, I tried to put the favorable ones in one color and, and the others in another to make it a little more easy. But special thanks to all those residents that sent in those emails, that called or stopped by. It's really important and it, it does matter when you let me know, you know, where you are on an issue or what seems to be important. This, the idea of installing a sidewalk was first brought to the city commission, I believe in June, by a resident that lives on Maplefield, Mr. Foreman. And at, and when he first mentioned it, he mentioned the fact that he walked his daughter to school on, and, and there was concern because he walked in the street. So, with that, I took it upon myself to contact the school district and ask to move the bus stop. That was done, but much to my mistake, and I talked to Mr. Foreman after, that was not the issue. The issue was, should there be a sidewalk on Pemberton Drive West, which is the area of Pemberton between Oakdale and Maplefield? And thus began the research. I think most people understand that I have been updating you month to month on what we have been doing, looking at the property, talking to a traffic engineer, talking to the police, consulting with as many officials and experts as possible to try to get a handle on what would be the best route to follow. You have in your packet a report from the traffic engineer that basically says, you know, Pemberton is one street in the city, there is another street on the east side, an area, I should say, that doesn't have a sidewalk, but it basically is the only street in the city without a sidewalk. And after looking at it, doing some traffic counts, it was not a very long study on that part, I was disappointed, but nonetheless, his recommendation was certainly a sidewalk could go in there. When I talked to the city engineers about it, and went back to them and said, you know, we're looking at this more closely, please give me a conservative estimate of what the real cost would be, and you had already seen the sketch of, a sidewalk could be put in that area, and we always work with the engineers to protect any kind of landscape and trees. And as you noticed on the sketch they provided, the sidewalk meanders a little bit. There's not big circles around the trees, but certainly, it meanders enough that we would be able to protect most of the trees, if not all. There might be some landscaping compromise at the end of Maplefield part of the street because there is extensive landscaping at the Kootas Home. I also provided you some photographs so that you could get a better idea, even though I'm sure all of you have been over there once or twice, of the area that we're talking about. The most, and I do know, and I will just say this, I know that Mr. Foreman has been, has been educating residents on his position and why he brought this forward, and I also know that the homeowners on Three Corners and the one facing Pemberton have been talking to residents. There is no doubt in my mind that most people in the city are aware that this is being discussed, and that's a good thing. So, the most interesting part of this was, as you all know, I contacted the city zoning attorney and asked him to look into the right-of-way and make sure that the city actually had a right-of-way. And last month, as I told you, I searched through some of the minutes of the dates that he was looking for a document. He had a, a legal assistant go to the county, search the records, and they were unable to find any transfer vacated record or, or anything related to the eastern portion of Pemberton. The western portion of Pemberton, or the corner of Maplefield, it was fine. There was documentation and that was city property, and the only question came in on the, the easternmost portion of that street, and there was nothing we could find at the county to show that the city owned it. And so, that's how I approached the issue last week, as I was preparing my recommendation. Lo and behold, apparently over, Friday, I guess it was, one of the residents that had previously sent me an email, it was a great email with a lot of suggestions, apparently sent a copy of a deed to Commissioner Kriziek. And I saw that on Monday morning after the packet had gone out, and was surprised, pleased, but surprised, and I immediately sent it over to our attorney to take a look at it. It was dated 1927 and it, it clearly conveys, that lot is Lot 17, it conveys ownership of that lot to the city. And so, I revised-
Going way back to when we were a village.
It was made to the Village of Pleasant Ridge, right? We were not incorporated at the time. So, in any event, I revised the memorandum. I don't think there's much difference in the attachments that, that were provided. And in that original memorandum, which I kept in the second one, there's been a lot of discussion about alternatives to a sidewalk, especially understanding, some people understanding that maybe the city did not have the, the right to construct a sidewalk, and so people suggested many alternatives. I talked to numerous people about, about, you know, what that is like, were there any of these in neighboring communities? And there are, but they're on major thoroughfares. There are none exist, none that I could find that exist on small side streets where there's actually a walking path. There might be some bike paths. In any event, I just, I looked at all angles of this, and the recommendation as far as putting something in the street that would provide a better safety net, if you will, I didn't recommend any of them. And that included hash marks or putting in a curb, there wasn't enough room to put in a curb, just because you really, at that point, you are directing pedestrians in the street. And even though they travel in the street today, it is not as though you're putting a directional sign to say, this is where you should walk. In any event, I left those alternatives in the mail for you to take a look at, just so that you know I tried to cover every angle for your review. Let's see, what else shall I cover? If we, I didn't go into great detail about the specifics of the requirements for a sidewalk, but I did talk to the engineers and I'm pretty familiar with what we need to do. And again, I will just state that there is ample room to put a sidewalk on the south side of Pemberton. We would have to do some adjusting to protect the, the trees and the landscape, and because of the ADA requirements, we're going to have to have one area, which is possible, to have a passing lane for wheelchairs. I have talked to Mr. Foreman, I have talked to the residents on the corners, you know, I think there's some merit to both sides of this argument, and certainly, this is just a two-sided opinion. I've talked to the police as far as, I've heard a lot of people say, you know, it's really a safety concern, and, and I agree, it's a safety concern if, if you feel it's a safety concern, but the history of the city shows no incidents, either pedestrian or vehicle, on that street or in that immediate, you know, area of that street. So, you know, I mentioned this when the chief gave you, when I met with the chief about it, and, you know, he just said, the cars on that street in particular, because of the length of the street, they're mostly turning onto the street or off of the street. So, it's not as though you build up a lot of speed or you build up, and there's not a lot of traffic, you know? It is a cut-through street, there's no doubt about it, and it does provide east-to-west access in the city. So, with that, I'm sure there are some comments to share, and I gave you a suggested motion in the, in the memorandum, and I have had at least discussions with all of you, so I think it will be an interesting discussion.
At the last meeting, Mr. Carroll asked for addressing the commission until tonight. Mr. Carroll, would you care to address this?
Sure.
As one of the home suspects.
Yep. Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Tom Carroll, 36 Oakdale. I, I do, I do want to point something out before we talk about the, about the sidewalk, and that is express, and I, and I sent a note to Commissioner Perry today, express my displeasure with the fact that she accompanied Mr. Foreman in, in the effort to get the signatures. I, I don't, I don't know if it's legal, I guess the attorney, I don't know if that's a legal issue, I don't know if it's, I assume it's not, if it's, if it's an ethical issue, but it, it just seems to me that, that by doing that, you're giving implicit support to the effort. Maybe that was the intention, I, I don't know. You said, that you wanted to hear what people had to say, and I, and I understand that, but I think by combining it with the petitioning, it, it, really, we feel like we're fighting not only people that want to put a sidewalk there, but, but you as well. And that's, and that's discouraging. That's, that's, I, I don't know, is that?
Well, I think it's a legal issue, I don't know. Basically, what happened was, is that we did receive a concern, obviously, you know, from homeowners indicating that one of the commissioners was going around on an initiative, and, you know, they, they thought that possibly they should recuse themselves in relationship to, if there was going to be a vote on the sidewalk. And basically, I did author an opinion, it says, is that basically, if I could read it to you, it says, "The administration received a communication requesting that a Pleasant Ridge commissioner recuse himself/herself from a vote on the question of whether a sidewalk should be constructed on Pemberton between Maplefield and Oakdale Boulevard because of the commissioner's alleged door-to-door solicitation with a citizen who's seeking signature on a petition to have a sidewalk constructed and set out above. The inquiry is whether that activity, if true, precludes that commissioner from voting on the initiative. The City of Pleasant Ridge has a charter provision regarding government ethics, see section 12.01. The charter provision deals with the question of a commissioner having a financial position in the subject matter of the vote and the need to fully disclose the commissioner's interest in the endeavor. Other than addressing the financial question and the need to disclose a financial interest, the Pleasant Ridge City Charter is silent as to any other activity." The Michigan, Michigan compile laws provides a more extensive discussion regarding the ethics, the question of ethics, and as Michigan compile law 15.330, "Statements of Conduct for Public Officials and Employees." Michigan file law 15.342 states a public officer or employee shall not represent his or her personal opinion as that of the agency. One can assume in going door-to-door that the commissioner did not represent that position advocated was the official position of the City of Pleasant Ridge. However, one never knows what the perception of the homeowner who is being solicited as to what then is the official position of the city. Further, those citizens who oppose the initiative can only perceive this activity by the commissioner going door-to-door as being unfair and divisive. Citizens are more familiar with judges that recuse themselves as compared to measures of the legislature body who vote on proposals. A judge is an arbiter that must decide the law on the facts that are applicable to a situation. Therefore, there cannot be a hint of impropriety by the judge who is making these decisions. Therefore, if the judge knows of any of the parties, is familiar with the facts that be decided independently of what will be heard in court or any other factor wherein the appearance of impropriety is present, then the judge must recuse himself or herself from hearing the case. However, the same standard is not applicable to the legislative branch. The latter may be opinionated on any issue and may even run as a candidate on a platform to construct a sidewalk on Pemberton between Maplefield and Oakdale. It may be disconcerting to have a commissioner going door-to-door on an initiative that the commission will be voting on, and it is a policy that probably should not be encouraged. Further, it gives a perception of impropriety and that the ultimate vote on proposition will not be fair. However, does such an activity, such as going door-to-door, bar the commissioner from voting on the ultimate question? The answer is no. The answer is no. As long as the commissioner does not have a financial interest in the outcome of the vote, or has not represented that position advocated as the official of, position of the city, then the commissioner's First Amendment vote must remain under bridge and the commissioner may vote on the initiative.
And I want to apologize for, if, if it felt like uncomfortable or like it, it was not the right action. I've, I've talked to many different city officials and state officials and county officials, sort of trying to, to weigh my, the, the level of maybe if I had made a mistake on this. And a couple were like, well, you know what, you could be the person who goes out and gets the signatures, you know, you could be that person. So, but I am sorry for it making you feel not heard or not, like that you would have some misrepresentation. Now, I would never, and I think this body knows, I would never try and say this whole commission believes what I believe on any issue. So, and that's okay.
Yeah, no, I think, I, I appreciate that. And I, and we thank you for coming out and taking a look at the property with us.
Sure.
Which you did. I, I just, I guess the point I want to make is, I don't think that what you heard that day is necessarily representative of what those houses felt. The people in favor of it, I'm sure, said, yay, great, sign, let's go. But the people who didn't, how, did they give you, did you get from them really how they felt about it? How many people said, I'm not sure about it? We had several people come to us and said, you came to the door. But I said, I'm, I want to talk to you guys before, you know how you felt about it. So, I guess, I, I would ask that, as you consider it, it be recognized that, that what you heard was not necessarily-
Certain.
What, the, the full feelings of, of the, of the community that, that you talked to. That, that being said, yeah, this has been a difficult thing for all of us, for sure. Feeling a bit under siege, for sure. And, and I know my, my wife and, and my neighbors have, have things to, to say as well. I, I understand the concern about the safety issue. When we moved in, we called the city and said, why isn't there a sidewalk here? And they said, I don't know, none was ever built. And if you want one, you have to pay for it. So we said, okay, well, I don't want that much, and we can't afford it anyway. So we've lived there for 18 years without a sidewalk. We raised two boys. Our, our oldest was two, youngest was not born yet, they're now 20 and 17. They've been all over the place. I guess on the safety issue, I, I, I respect and understand it can be a safety issue. I, it, it just can be, right? Anything can be, right? I, I, I think there's probably nobody in this city who hasn't had the issue of, you know, somebody backing out while you're trying to walk by or drive by or ride your bike by. It, it happens. And I don't know that the addition of a sidewalk is going to prevent those types of things, which, which I think was, was part of the initial, initial issue that, that Jay and Mary Foreman did. Because I almost ran over Mary one morning. And that's, you know, and, and I understand that, I understand that. We've all learned to be defensive walkers here. But, but I think that the, it must be understood that this does have a big impact on us. We have, we have put an addition on, we've landscaped. Certainly, people are allowed to walk on the grass. Rob Hasenrick does it every night. And, and that's, and that's fine, that's fine. But to actually put a sidewalk there to affect the landscaping, and to be honest, I'm, as I kept looking at it over the last several weeks, I'm frankly concerned that we're going to be trading one risk for another. And that is, we have landscaping, we have big magnolia bush on the, on the eastern side of our driveway, on the western side, if you've been there, there are trees all along there. Frankie and Gianna for sure have a privacy hedge right next to their driveway. I'm very concerned that we've now lost a buffer, that if some kid screws by on his bike, I mean, we have a Chevy Bolt, the thing makes no noise. I'm really concerned that, that our, our margin for seeing some, somebody is, is compromised without drastically changing landscaping. And I guess if we're going to get into that, then we, we've got a different and a bigger issue, I think. So, I, I, I'm concerned about multiplying by five my sidewalk footage, both from a maintenance as well as a slip and fall maintenance. I did look up last night, I saw I paid 460 bucks in 2002 to fix, I don't know how many flags, and well, now I'm going to have five times that. So, there, there is a real, there's a real impact to us by doing this. And, and again, I don't want to minimize the safety concerns, I respect that. But I will also say, hey, there've been a lot of people approached us, the research with the, with the, the police, who said, hey, you know, I, I grew up on this street, I grew up on Maplefield, I, you know, there were seven kids that lived in our house. I mean, people have lived there for 80 years without incident. Doesn't mean you have, don't have to be careful, doesn't mean something couldn't happen. But I guess really, that's really the question, is the weighing of, of a potential safety issue versus the cost to the city, which I, we don't really know what that is, but also the impact to us. I don't want Pemberton, where we live, to look like Pemberton where the storms went through. Right? I mean, that's, that's a concern for me. I love looking out the back of my house and seeing the trees, and I, I don't know that those trees will, will survive this, so.
Tom, I have an aerial photograph that superimposes the plot plan over the property, obviously not with the accuracy of a, of a survey. But if you accept that that's the lot line, that's the street line. The property that you have treated as your own since 1994, does it stop here or has it gone to here?
I, I, we, I think we have treated the whole thing as ours. I, I mean, I, you know, I, I mow it, I fertilize it, I, I, I guess I know it's not mine. And it's easier to recognize that when you have a, a sidewalk there and you know that the part on the street is certainly not yours. But in terms of playing on it and my kids and, I mean, we're, we're all over it. I, I, we, we did not extend our landscaping out much past where it was before. I wasn't really sure where the line was. So I, I didn't, we didn't, you know, we didn't, we didn't go out to the street with the landscaping. Like I said, the, the landscaping along the side of the house when we bought it, that line has been more or less preserved. But, I mean, I consider it all my yard, knowing that part of it isn't.
And if a sidewalk went in, it would put that sidewalk approximately, how close to your house?
Uh, pr- depending on where the trees are-
Depends on how far, yeah.
Yeah, but probably from the side windows in my, my family room, it would probably be, it would be less than 10 feet. I mean, it's, it's only 20 feet from the street to the house. So, depending on the width, depending where it is, I mean, it would, I, I would not want to yell at my kids in my family room, because people would be right outside my window and that's a concern. Not yelling at my kids.
At this age, you can yell at them.
Exactly.
Any other questions? Did the other, is the other affected property owner here?
Yes.
Did they want to address us?
Is Jennifer here too, from?
Yes.
And did you have a question?
And the James too.
No, I'll think about it.
Hi, Gina Kuta, 49 Maplefield. You know, one of the concerns that I had was, was a concern that I brought up at the last meeting. And that was a question of the safety of a sidewalk during the wintertime when there's really no place to put snow. If you've all been over to look at the property, you'll know that there is a, a long area of privacy hedge that runs parallel to Pemberton. And the distance between the street and the privacy hedge is generously six feet. So, I had brought that up as a concern, and I'm wondering if there's any comment on that concern.
I can tell you that in looking at this property and talking to the engineers, if there's anything that may have to be removed, it's that hedge. The rest of, you know, the trees, but you said it yourself, that's a very narrow area from the hedge to the street.
It, it is, but that is, you know, basically, that gives us whatever price that we have for our backyard. And I understand that there, you know, there's been discussions of, of safety, but there have been no issues. And I have purchased that lot, I have been there for 10 or 11 years at this point in time. Part of what was nice about that lot was the privacy that you get from that hedge. Another factor that was nice was having a corner lot that I didn't have to maintain a sidewalk on two sides. So, this request, I believe, is going to greatly devalue my property. Is there any plan from the city to help with any privacy hedge or do something to help us maintain the privacy that we've had?
Well, I don't want to tell you that those would be removed, Gianna, but I, to be honest with you, during my discussion about putting a sidewalk in, there was, like I said, the, the conversation always centered around, I think we can do this without compromising the landscape. You have extensive landscaping on that side of your property, it's beautiful. But again, I think depending on where we locate that sidewalk, different, completely different from the end of the carols, near the curb is clear by you. So, we can always move the sidewalk closer to the curb if we have to, and if that would resolve anything. I'm always a little scared about a sidewalk being immediately adjacent to a street, but...
Although the sidewalk on Woodward, at one point, I measured it the other day, is one foot from Woodward. So if we can live one foot from Woodward, we can live one foot from the end.
Where is it, one foot?
Right at the north city limits.
And I think on Maplefield, there's-
Maybe it's 18 inches.
You mean at Main Street? I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, no. On the west side of Woodward.
On the west side of Woodward. Isn't there a berm area there?
Very small, about 18 inches.
There's a berm. Yeah, I think it's a foot.
The landscaping you mentioned, is that something you put in or was that there when you bought the house?
Well, the, the large privacy hedge that is closest to Pemberton has been there for years. We did not put it in. There is some other landscaping that we did put in that is farther from, from Pemberton that would allow room for, for snow. But again, even if you put the, the sidewalk very close to the street, all of the snow that the plow puts on the sidewalk, that has to also be moved in addition to the snow that's already on the sidewalk. And there's very little space for this, between sidewalk and hedge. So I still, even if that were the case, where am I supposed to put this? How is that not a safety hazard with, with the snow there? Or are you just, basically then, are people going back into the street? And if the goal is to get people off the street, it doesn't seem like this is going to meet that goal.
Other questions?
Just have one. Sure, you said that there's a possibility we'd have to remove the hedge? Or is it possible we can move the hedge?
I don't know about moving it, maybe. I, I think we will look at all alternatives. I, you know, you may have to do some landscaping, you know, replacement landscaping, but obviously that would add to the cost too.
Well, your point's well taken, though. If you put the snow on the sidewalk and then you have to clean your sidewalk, you're going to put it back in the street.
Can't.
And we're going to come along and push it back or give you a ticket for dumping it in the street. So, it seems like a, a lose-lose situation, right?
Well, is there usually a pile of snow? I know on my street, there ends up being a pile of snow next to the, the grass next to the sidewalk that doesn't go in, that, you know, they have shoved off of the street, but it's still at the edge of the street? Isn't that sort of where that goes? I mean, that's where I know I put, because I have hedges along, I'm on the corner lot.
Not if you put the sidewalk, walk real close to the curb to avoid that.
The plow would just dump the snow upon it.
It would definitely push it on the sidewalk.
Now, part of Maplefield already has a sidewalk that's attached to the curb. And it doesn't seem like, we haven't heard any type of a problem of snow storage or, you know, snow removal issue there.
Is that the corner of Maplefield and Pemberton essentially?
I, I think so.
Yes.
It's up in there.
I believe I know the area that you're speaking of and that the consideration there is that there is no privacy hedge or landscaping that is directly adjacent to that sidewalk. So there is room to put that snow someplace.
So that the snow will go back onto the lot?
Yeah. It's, it's a slightly different issue because of that lack of privacy hedge or the lack of landscaping.
I will add to that. We used to, when we, up until last year, when we no longer do the sidewalk clearing.
Yes.
Absolutely, we got calls because the plow dumped the snow on the sidewalk. And obviously, that is not an area that's identified as a priority street, you know, for traffic or bus routes or school routes. So, but yes, we always did get concerns about the snow being piled on the sidewalk.
And the street's wider there, so what might be 12 or 13 feet by the Carroll house might be five feet less, might be eight or seven feet then by, by this house, very from the curb.
That's right.
Hey ma'am, if I may, the same picture? If you assume for argument's sake that that truly is a lot, a lot, is that where the hedges are that you're talking about?
I believe so, basically, from the driveway to right about this area.
Okay. Are there not hedges here too?
There are some hedges that are, that are a little farther away from Pemberton and that park.
Isn't there a couple trees there too?
Yes, there are a couple trees.
Yeah, is there a, to walk there.
And so far as what you have treated as your backyard, since you've been looking there, have you treated it as to here or as to here?
Similar to Tom, we maintain the entire area, but especially with this privacy hedge here, I guess, you know, we don't really plant on the side, we don't let, you know, our daughter plant on the side. So, we did put in this landscaping that runs along this area, so the arbor light here, we did treat it as our own, I guess, and, and, and that landscaping.
But to some degree, you tried to follow the lead line at the same time.
Essentially, essentially.
Thank you. Uh, Tom, I think you mentioned other neighbors. Are you?
Just one other comment, if I may. Um, you know, we, just from the safety issue, we have a four-and-a-half-year-old daughter. So we have been, you know, dealing with is it or is it not? And we have not felt a, a need for this sidewalk. And I, I guess I have approached it as, not all communities do have sidewalks, and my daughter needs to know what she needs to do in other situations where there are none. So, to some extent, I do approach this as a learning opportunity so that she knows what she should be doing. Where should she be, is there no sidewalk, it thinks along those lines, which I feel will help her in other situations. Just wanted to add that in.
Thank you. Any of the neighbors?
Oh, sorry.
Hollis, Karen Hollis and Jennifer, yeah.
Hi. Jennifer D'Amico, 124 Pemberton. I'm the ranch on the corner, so the northwest corner.
So you're the corner that we were talking about with the sidewalk, yeah?
No, there's-
Oh, you're across the street.
Across the street from the Pudas.
Okay.
So while the sidewalk won't affect my property, what it does affect is my neighbors. And Pleasant Ridge is a community that prides itself on its green space. By putting in a sidewalk, you're taking away a really nice green area, privacy, natural areas for birds, animals. I mean, if you look at that area, it's full of life, and it won't be the same with a sidewalk. There's not much traffic on that corner. The studies prove that there's no, that there's no hazards at that corner. People walk their children, guide their children, and are responsible for their children and teach their children to watch out for cars. Children playing on the streets or walking in the streets have learned from their parents to watch out for traffic. And hopefully, drivers will be responsible too. But you can't ensure the safety all the time of your children. And hopefully, drivers will be responsible, too, but you can't ensure the safety all the time of your children. And you just have to pray that, that, you know, they've learned and they won't make mistakes, and hopefully, drivers won't. But you can't ensure safety of everybody. This sidewalk is overkill. There's seven feet right now from the hedges on the Kutas lawn to the street. I look out my windows and I see people walking on their grass all the time. Children walking on the grass, adults walking on the grass. And that's not a problem. The Kutas don't care, the Carols don't care. That's fine. There's no reason to put in a sidewalk. The sidewalk's going to ruin the privacy of the Kutas and the neighbors behind them on Maplefield, who also have two small boys. And those kids run crazy back there, because I can hear them, can't see them because of the bushes, the hedges. But, you know, those hedges provide privacy, they provide safety. And the sidewalk, frankly, is just overkill. And the concern of basically one citizen who's railing the troops for a sidewalk, that's not necessary.
Thank you. Any other of the neighbors?
Me, seventy-two Maplefield, Tim Mathias.
You have to say it again when you get up here.
Oh, sorry. Seventy-two Maplefield, Tim Mathias. I just wanted to say a couple of brief things. I thought it was odd there wasn't a sidewalk there to begin with. And then after I had a daughter, I thought it was unsafe. And, I mean, I teach her not to go in the street, but I have to walk her in the street. I teach her not to go on people's property. Sometimes I like to put her up on their property when there's a car coming. I don't know where else there is in our neighborhood that doesn't have a sidewalk, and I don't know why it wasn't finished there, but it seems like we should connect the dots. Maybe think about the future of families that are going to move in. I think that's important. If this was done fifteen years ago, I wouldn't be thinking about it, but I'd be enjoying that sidewalk, because it is very nerve-wracking. And why do we put in stop signs, parking space lines, street lights, railroad crossings for safety? So I just wanted to say those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Believe me, I wish it had been done eighty-five years ago.
Jay Foreman, seventy-nine Maplefield. I'm up here supporting him again tonight to ask you to please address a serious safety concern in our neighborhood. The same issue that I've brought up at every city commission meeting from June until today. The issue is the lack of a sidewalk on Pemberton between Oakdale and Maplefield. I believe that a sidewalk is the most sensible, most cost-effective, and safest way for pedestrians to move between Maplefield and the rest of the city. I've heard and heard of a few of the arguments against the sidewalk, which I'll now give my thoughts on. One, no incidents have ever occurred here. Well, the key word that is being left out of this statement is "yet." Just because someone hasn't, just because something hasn't happened yet, that says nothing about what may or may not happen in the future. The Pleasant Ridge City Commission has always prided itself on being proactive and forward-thinking. And I've seen numerous examples of this. The question that comes to mind is why the city commission would choose to look to the past in this case instead of proactively addressing this problem before an incident occurs? How many injuries or deaths would need to happen before it would be considered worthy of attention? By comparison, a drunk driver might be able to avoid an accident ninety-nine times out of a hundred. But do any of us want to be number one hundred? Two, a sidewalk would change the look of the streets. While it may be true that sidewalks are not considered to be pretty, there are lots of important things that are unsightly, yet they serve a critical purpose. Things like stop signs, traffic lights, and fire hydrants fame a few. These things exist for very important reasons, no different from a sidewalk. Installing one here would really bring the street more to line with every other Pleasant Ridge street on the west side of Woodward. In fact, as we discussed at past commission meetings, the only other street in the entire city to not have a sidewalk is a section of Gainesboro across from the DPW yard. So yes, this would definitely bring Pemberton to line with the rest of the city, which has sidewalks. A street with sidewalks provides the benefits of safety and connection with the rest of the neighborhood. And I think that these are key things that Ridgers appreciate and value about this city. Neighbors connected to neighbors and all looking out for one another.
Jay, can I ask a question?
Yes.
With respect over by the DPW yard, is there a sidewalk on the other side of the street?
I'm not fully aware of that.
So it's on either side of the street, okay.
Three, having a sidewalk will affect privacy. While this may be true, and it's definitely unfortunate, it is no different from the many other corner homes throughout the city, all of which have sidewalks on two sides. Sixty-one Oakdale is but one example. In our city, the norm is to have the sidewalk, and this situation is the exception. Four, having a sidewalk is more maintenance. There's definitely some maintenance involved with having a sidewalk bordering one's property. This is something that we all deal with in Pleasant Ridge and so many other communities. Someone living on a corner obviously has more sidewalk than residents that do not live on a corner. We're not asking for anything cruel or unusual to be imposed on the two residents that would have the sidewalk installed next to the property. Nothing more than what has already been done throughout the rest of the city. We're merely asking that a mistake be corrected so the residents of Maplefield can be safe and enjoy the same connection with the rest of the city that all of the residents of the other Pleasant Ridge streets have. Five, potential liability with nowhere to put shoveled snow. I understand the concern, but it is certainly not an unworkable situation. With an open mind, there are places to put the snow. There are homes in the city with more complicated situations that they find a way to clear the snow. Forty-two Ridge at Hanover is one example. It can be done. Six, people go the other way and avoid this road. Seriously, does avoiding or ignoring the problem really address it? Obviously not. Maplefield spans the entire north-south length of the city. There are two roads that lead from Maplefield to the rest of Pleasant Ridge. That's Pemberton and Cambridge. They are practically at opposite ends of the road, over a quarter mile apart. To give a personal example, we live at seventy-nine Maplefield, which is the tenth house from Pemberton. If my son were to ride his bike to his friend Quinn's house at 129 Elm Park, it would make the most sense for him to use Pemberton to get to Oakdale, Oakdale to Elm Park, and go about point three miles in the process. If he were to go in the other direction, head all the way to the Cambridge end of Maplefield, up at Oakdale, and backtrack to Elm Park, he would ride approximately point six miles. Twice the distance to get there, the same to get back home. It's ludicrous. Seven, spend money on other things instead. The estimate that Sherry received for the sidewalk installation was $7,000. Sherry said it's not uncommon for these numbers to go up a bit, but most likely, not more than a few thousand dollars. I believe that protecting resident pedestrians of all ages from harm or even death is well worth its price and more. Eight, why not just walk on the grass? This section of Pemberton is almost four hundred feet long, longer than a football field. I'll ask you this. Have you ever seen a three, four, or five-year-old try to ride a big-wheel bicycle, tricycle, scooter, roller skates, whatever, over a length of grass that is almost four hundred feet long? How about an elderly person or a disabled person in a wheelchair? Even on a perfect day, it doesn't work. Nine, everybody's in the street anyway. I've heard this one a lot. This one is definitely not true, and we all know better. I believe that joggers and adult bicycle riders typically choose the option to be in the street. However, this is certainly not the case for elderly or disabled residents, those pushing strollers, walking with their young children on bikes, walking their dogs, and so on. Those that willingly choose to be in the street are accepting the risk that goes along with that. This is very different from having no option but to be in the street. I don't think that anyone in this building, the city, or in this country for that matter, can honestly say that it is just as safe for us to walk in the street as it is for us to walk on a sidewalk. So the question I keep asking myself is why is Maplefield different? Every other street in the city but one has a sidewalk. This section of Pemberton is the only Pleasant Ridge street on the west side of Woodward without any sidewalk on either side of the road. That may be untrue. Maybe the one across from the DPW has one on either side of the road, so that's incorrect. What makes the residents of Maplefield any different from the rest of the city to where they don't need a safe and efficient way to get to and from other parts of the city and beyond? Or is it that this section of Pemberton is that much safer than every other street in the city and needs no sidewalk? And residents can continue to walk in the street without needing to give a second thought to their personal safety or the safety of their young children? Back in September, I left the commission meeting with an action letter to show that more residents than just the Foremans would like to see a sidewalk installed on this section of Pemberton. I set my target signatures at one hundred signatures to represent one hundred unique households, one signature per home, as one hundred is a nice even number and quite significant in a neighborhood composed of about twelve hundred homes. This is more than eight percent of the households in the city. So for your information, in case you would like to look at it, I gave copies of the surveys. I can leave that with you. I spent the month of September talking to neighbors and collecting these one hundred signatures. And will tell you that while it was a time-consuming task, it was by no means difficult. When asked for their thoughts on this issue, residents were overwhelmingly in support. I believe Commissioner Perry can attest to this, as she accompanied me on the first Saturday morning of going door-to-door in order to see the reactions from residents herself. Sherry, you and I talked about this following week. That morning, of the ten residents that were home and answered the door, nine of them were in clear support of the issue. To this day, I still have people that ask me about the petition, and if they can sign it, I thank them and tell them that I've already met my target number. I believe that one hundred signatures representing one hundred unique households is a significant number. I'm not really sure if it's relevant, but I'll note that eighty-four were from residents on the west side of Woodward, sixty-one of which from Maplefield, Oakdale, and the nearest block of Cambridge. Interested parties, for sure. I'm happy to leave you with this original copy that you can keep. Just to be clear, as you can see in the petition, at the top of each page of the petition, the following text appears. I've recently been informed that one resident has asked the city to install a sidewalk on Pemberton between Maplefield and Oakdale. I'm signing this petition to show that I support this request, and I would like to see the sidewalk installed for reasons of safety and connection to the rest of our beautiful, walkable neighborhood. Residents should not be forced to be in the street when doing such things as walking or running, riding their bicycles, walking their dogs, and so on. This is even more concern when children are involved, walking to the school bus pickup, riding their bikes to the pool, et cetera. Please install a sidewalk at this location. Thank you. This petition provides evidence, I believe, that there are at least one hundred unique households that would like to see this longstanding issue addressed and have a sidewalk installed on Pemberton between Oakdale and Maplefield. It also represents the minimum number of households that will thank you when your vote to install the sidewalk shows them that their concerns are important and their voices are heard. It will be clear to everyone that keeping the community safe is more important than keeping the few happy. I'd like to conclude with a question for Sherry. I know that the traffic study was done and the results were not ready in time for last month's meeting. You kind of summarized them today. I'm curious to hear more specific details. Could you please share any findings and/or specific recommendations from the company that did the study or possibly even read the entire study? I'm not sure how long it is, if that's feasible or not.
Are you finished? I'll answer when you're on.
I am, thank you.
I would note before you do that, while I recognize a lot of these names, there's people that also send us emails. There are a lot of additional emails that we receive that aren't on this list, so you're probably well over your hundred.
As I summarized in my oral report on the memo, I was disappointed because the traffic study only took place a few days. Overall, the speed study showed an eighty-fifth percentile speed of twenty-four miles per hour with thirteen point two percent exceeding. Of that, there were five hundred and sixty-six vehicles in the study. For the three-year period of two thousand nine through eleven, there were no crashes on this section of Pemberton. Nor were there any crashes or incidents for the period of January first through September thirty. In addition to that, as I mentioned, I asked the chief to go search further back. There have been no reported incidents on the street. The recommendation, the traffic engineer in reviewing the streets and the makeup of the city via Google Maps and our discussions, his recommendation was simply if the city wanted to install a sidewalk, he sees no reason not to, because in his opinion, it seemed to be in keeping with the master plan of the city when it was incorporated to install a sidewalk on all the streets in the city.
You mentioned a number of over five hundred cars. How long was that period?
It was from, his dates are from October third to fifth, Jay. But I can tell you that the counter was not out there for three days. It was probably closer to two, two and a half days.
But Sherry, could you not share the, I don't know if we heard that, the count numbers? It says here the traffic count showed an average of three hundred and thirty-three vehicles. Now, it's three hundred and thirty-three vehicles a day?
Here, I'll just read it. It'll probably be better. Right. So Pemberton ranges from twenty-three feet, nine inches, to twenty-six feet wide with joints five feet and ten inches and eleven feet and ten inches from the face of each curb. There are four driveways on this section of Pemberton. There is one house that faces Pemberton. This section of Pemberton is approximately three hundred and ninety feet in length. These are just really laying out what the street looks. Maplefield dead ends approximately five hundred and forty feet north of Pemberton. The traffic count and speed study were taken on this section of Pemberton from October three through five, two thousand twelve. The traffic count showed an average of three hundred and thirty-three vehicles, one thirty-three eastbound and two hundred westbound. The speed study showed an eighty-fifth percentile speed of twenty-four miles per hour with thirteen point two exceeding, the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit for the five sixty-six vehicles in the study. And then I retold you the fact.
So the five sixty-six is the total time.
As part of the review of Pemberton, a quick overview of the city streets was done using Google Earth to determine how many other streets in Pleasant Ridge do not have sidewalks. From the Google Earth review, no other streets in the city of Pleasant Ridge were found not to have sidewalks. After reviewing the information and data from the field review, the traffic count, the speed study, the Google Earth review, and the crash data, it is recommended that the city consider constructing a sidewalk on at least one side of Pemberton for the following reasons. It is the only east-west street besides Cambridge, which is point three miles south of Pemberton, for citizens to travel easterly from Maplefield toward Woodward. It is the only city in the street without a sidewalk. And that is the entire report.
Thank you. So I would just like for the city to heed and act on the recommendation of the company that should be unbiased to be paid to perform this study. Thank you.
Thank you. Robbie, you need your hand up.
You unleashed me now. I'm Robbie Fairwood, so I live in southeast. I was going to be kidding, it was a joke. So I have a dog.
I'm sorry, this is a north problem.
Yeah. So I walk my dog every day, and we do different paths. And some of you might have seen me. We walk on the west side in this area probably once a day, a couple of times a week. At any rate, a couple of times, I walked Willie, my Willie, down, down the short street. And yeah, a couple of times, we've almost gotten nailed by a car coming east, they were going westbound, they crossed over Oakdale, heading towards Maplefield. I mean, I unfortunately have a dog on a long leash. I had to really rope him in, because this car was cruising. So twenty-four miles an hour on a short street like that, you really are gunning it. I mean, if you took a turn off, that's pretty fast, and then to go over it. While I sympathize with all of your landscape, and Mr. Carroll has beautiful landscape. Actually, one day, he was watering his new trees, and I had Willie, and that's one of the days I almost got nailed. I was talking to Mr. Carroll. Landscaping is beautiful, but we're putting landscaping above safety, and I don't know, I don't walk too much over there. I live near Cork, so anybody that was involved in Cork, we were told, well, you live near Woodward, you know you're going to have parking and traffic and everything else. Well, if you buy a house in a corner or on the street, you should expect or you think about, why isn't there a sidewalk? Mr. Carroll even said, when he moved in, he wanted a sidewalk. He didn't want to pay for it, but he wanted a sidewalk.
I asked about it.
Yeah, you asked about it. You were interested.
Yeah, I was.
It would have been a good idea, because you had little kids. So, no, no. So my point is, you're talking about privacy. Well, again, you live on a street. You know, you can move your shrubs. Devaluing property, I don't know how you're going to value, how you're going to measure that. And you already talked about the sidewalk on the northeast corner of Maplefield that's up against the street. I mean, that's it. I mean, we all have to move snow. When you, when your driveway gets plowed in, you've got to figure out where to put it. You put it up, you move it. You bury your own shrubs. You know, we all have landscaping on berm, not everybody, but on berms. If it's buried, it'll survive, so that was my two cents.
Thank you. Is that you, ma'am?
Charlie Coon, forty, Maplefield. I'm in favor of a sidewalk, to get that out there. The, like I addressed in my letter, I have a unique vantage point of Pemberton and Maplefield. I'm across, I'm on the west side of Maplefield. Big picture window that looks directly onto Pemberton almost, or one house, or a door of where that is. And so I can only speak anecdotally to what I observe in terms of traffic patterns and speeds and behavior. But I'm not surprised at all that, that there is far more traffic coming westbound down the street than there is outbound, in other words, going, coming in and not out, which makes perfect sense, because I've witnessed probably hundreds of times in five years of me living in the city, since I am the first driver, when you turn right heading north on Maplefield, trying to get out to find the freeway, you turn around in my driveway, or you go all the way down sometimes. So we put up big plantation shutters, because trust me, there's no blinds thick enough at night of headlights shining in your windows.
That's why I got the mailbox at the end of my street. They were going down there anyway when the street was closed for construction, so no one else wanted the mailbox. So we took it. As long as they were there, they could post their mail.
There you go. So not complaining about it. It's a fact of life. I live there. I love it. I enjoy it. I have great neighbors. I know Frank and Gianni, they're one of the people. And Jenny, I have a pleasure about getting to know her and spending time with her. I have one with the Carols. So again, not a complaint, but it allows me to speak anecdotally to what I observed there. Meanwhile, you have to realize, when you reach Maplefield, you're pissed that you- Meanwhile, you have to realize, when you reach Maplefield, you're pissed that you can't get out of the city. You've tried Ridge, you've then tried Oakdale, and now you're at Maplefield. And if I'm out working on my lawn, I have frantic people, "How do I get out of here?" I tell them, "Go down, that's south of Maplefield, make your first right, I have my, you know, do the regular old park Sherman, go around, you're out of here." And, you know, you're lead foot at that point, because you're very aggravated. It happens on a weekly basis. That's what, and I think it's very evident by the traffic study, the cars coming in, and more cars coming in than going out, and they're heading back down Maplefield. Occasionally, they go back down Ken Burton, but mostly not, because they're not coming back down Maplefield.
I would also assume that it's a better cut-through route going that way than it is going the other way.
Right, no, it is. Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, you get a lot of cut-through traffic, without a doubt, you know, down through the neighborhood and to Oakdale Boulevard, wherever it's.
Where if they do go in the other way, they just hit the ditch anyway, and then they gotta go back south.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, you're gonna go on Sherman or something. So, that's one thing. In terms of no accidents on that street, I've never witnessed one or heard one, that's accurate. Since the street has no cut-throughs except Ken Burton and Cambridge, it's so straight and nice pavement and everything else, we often like to get drag racers, I don't know where they're from. I've been woken up in the middle of the night, I once smashed into Jenny's fire hydrant, disabled the car. This was a couple years ago. So it wasn't on Ken Burton, but you get some of that activity going on. Another one, someone stole a car, this was just, this was months ago. And there's skid marks coming down, around, turning right, heading northbound off Ken Burton on the Maplefield. I thought they hit my car, I'm glad they didn't, I already got hit, I was on the street by a neighbor, she was scared about it. And realized there's a wall there, slammed on the brakes, rolled the car onto the neighbor's lawn, up towards yours and Bales' place. So, yeah, I'll say no. So, you know, again, he's running from the cops, and he can't get out, and he was really ticked off, obviously. So, again, I didn't have a scientific study, but I think it's worthwhile, I think we need to respect our neighbors. Again, I really like Frank and Gianni, and I think that I'd be gracious to work with them to install a sidewalk and try to get them comfortable with some of the things that they may be able to do, if it is something that we move forward with. And same thing with the Carols. But I think it's a reasonable thing, it is city property, as long as we're not taking it on my name and getting into all that stuff, and maybe it's done somewhat cost-effectively. I think it's a reasonable request.
Thank you.
I'm Anne Duggan, I'm at ninety-six Maplefield, and I recognize the problem with the dogs. I often come home at, I don't have a nine-to-five job, so I come home at different hours, and I think people will be walking their dogs on the street and not thinking there's gonna be all this traffic for people coming home from work, maybe not being as cautious as they normally would be. And actually, a couple weeks before I sent the petition, I was turning onto Ken Burton, and someone was walking their dog, like, almost at Oakland, and I came really close to hitting them. And I'm careful, because I know there's no sidewalk.
At Oakdale, I mean?
At Oakdale, yeah. So, I just think, and every time I go through there, I mean, in the summertime, you've got kids running to the pool, going down Ken Burton, and there's some visibility issues, especially, you know, when I was coming in the evening, not, and just when someone's at the edge of Ken Burton and you're turning in, and they're walking their dog not on someone's grass, it's just, it's gonna hap, I mean, I'm not gonna say it's going to happen, but, I mean, we're worried about children, their welfare, making this playmaker, doing activities for children. I mean, one of the first things we should be concerned about is their safety. We should build a sidewalk before we worry about playgrounds. They can't play on them if they can't get to the playground in a safe manner. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Yes, there was.
Dave Tigert, fourteen, Oakdale. I've been listening to everything being said, and the key on mine is my address. When I moved in, there were six houses between myself and Tenma. I also knew at that point that there was a very strong possibility that six ninety-six was gonna come through. I also had people assure me that they would throw themselves in front of the bulldozer before this happened. And on many of these sides of this. This was a known thing going in. Now, none of the discussions I've heard so far has, and everyone said this is a great idea, have I heard anything as far as helping the two houses that are most impacted by this with any kind of compensation for suddenly having ten feet of their lot disappear, having extra liability added to their house, and extra tax for the sidewalk? So what are we doing to offset what everybody says is a great need, though in thirty-five years, nothing has, that I've been here, nothing has happened that's been into anybody on this street? But there, of course, is always the possibility, I could also be hit by a meteor. However, I'd like to hear what the city would like to do to help the Carols and the others on this street with this imposition. And it is an imposition, it's a big one. Now, I haven't heard anything about that except, you know, tough rocks, folks, this is the way it's gonna be. Thank you.
David, I'm not in the tough rocks camp. It is my thought that if we do approve construction of the sidewalk, that we instruct that it be done so in a manner to reasonably mitigate the impact upon the property of the two homeowners most affected.
I mean, we had to sue the state for the impact of six ninety-six on our house, so I am used to having things to the betterment of the state to impact me. Thank you.
Anybody else? This lady and then this gentleman?
Hi, Mallory Newman, I live at nineteen Maplefield, and I did sign the petition, and I'm in favor of the sidewalk, although I think this has been a really great discussion, and I wanna respond to just a couple of things. One, I thought I heard, you know, I was impressed with all the information that Sherry brought forward. It seems like the commission's taking this really seriously, done everything in their power to find alternative solutions and come up with something that will work for everyone, and I think we should all appreciate that this has been a very thoughtful, it appears to have been an extremely thoughtful process. I've heard nothing but sympathy for the homeowners and trying to save trees and work with them and figure out how to move the sidewalk so it's the least imposition, and try to deal with some of these things. So I take everyone at that word that would continue that the sidewalk is built. I walk my dogs, I bike, I walk myself. I'm very active and out and about, and I'm sure most people know my partner and I from biking around the, ten miles around the city every day, all summer long, since we've lived here. So, I can tell you I've had many near misses on that street, and I had to reel my dog in, and Jen would tell you, as soon as we turned that corner, I'm always admonishing her to put the dogs on the shortest leash possible. People would take that corner quick. And everything that Charlie said, we can vouch for too, because we get as many cars or more as he does, coming all the way down to the end of the street, because they can't see the brick wall for some reason. I don't know why. Maybe we need a big light on the brick walls, so people can actually see it. But they drive all the way to the end before they figure out that they can't, there's not some magic door.
Someone once tried to use that brick wall and attempted suicide.
I'm glad I wasn't here.
They did, they were successful.
And, so, and, you know, I think the traffic study does bear that out, there's a lot of traffic for a teeny tiny little street at a fast pace, and it bears out the concerns, and I, some of our neighbors are not here, I'm hoping that they have responded to, but we've talked about to the ones with little kids that get on their bikes and go to get ice cream, you know, at the gas station ice cream store. And, you know, we talk about it all the time, how fast the cars are coming, how scary it is, and how they are concerned, and while I'm very thankful that nothing, there's no reported accidents and nothing's happened, I'm sure there's been lots, and I know I've been fearful, lots and lots of near misses, I think Jen even got hit by a car once on her roller blade. So, I mean, people just.
On Maple, on Pemberton?
I don't know if it was on Pemberton.